All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to begin today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council. We got started a little late today because we had a very long executive session with a series of legal issues, so get right to it. We do want to welcome our friend Vice Mayor Cory Woods from the city of Tempe. I'm not sure if you're here for a particular item or just to learn how a city council meeting should really be run.[32.64][32.64](Laughter).[33.64][33.64](Laughter). Tell Mayor Mitchell I said that.[40.47][40.47](Laughter). All right, let's get back to real business here. All right, so the first item on our agenda is council information and follow-up requests. Do any members of the city council have any council information or follow-up requests, noting that we did get a late start? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. In my spare time, I thought I'd tell people what I've been doing. The Phoenix Chamber of Commerce had an event at City Hall where they brought business people in to meet with city leaders, and it was a very great session. I was able to meet many new people, business owners, and they learned about the city, and I think they enjoyed it as much as we enjoyed it. The Cactus Park Community Alliance had a big holiday event, and I want to congratulate them on all the work they've done this year and know that they have a lot planned for next year. Joe Kleima, commander of Black Mountain Precinct, retired. Big going-away party for him. He is an officer that had over 30 years in the police department, served in almost every division, and was an outstanding leader in this community, and he will be missed. But we have Commander Chuck Moran coming in, who promised to follow in his footsteps, so we want to welcome him to Black Mountain. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Williams. Any other member of the city council would have any information or follow-up requests? Councilwoman Pastor, you're on.
Thank you. I was happy to participate in the annual Electric Light Parade, and I want to thank APS for sponsoring that. I really would like, appreciate and thank the Parks and Recreation Department for coordinating the effort, knowing that there were over 100,000 people, spectators there, watching the Electric Light Parade. It was fabulous and fun, and of course, it was in District 4, so got to give a shout-out to Windsor, Medlock, St. Francis, Devonshire, all those areas that are impacted by the Electric Light Parade. I would like to thank my colleagues for participating in strategic planning session. I think it was great first steps as we move forward and realize all the fantastic things that we are doing and how we want to make our city even brighter and better. And then I took part in the Break a Bat, Plant a Tree event at In kennel Park with the Arizona Diamondbacks. I want to thank them for doing that, and the Arizona Lottery, who collaborated together with us. And then Thursday at 8:00, December 10th, I plan on attending a groundbreaking for a long-awaited development in District 4, the Muse at Central and McDowell. Looking forward to being with the mayor that morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any other members of the council? Councilwoman Waring?
Yes, thank you. The District 2 holiday party will be Wednesday night, so if you're watching this on tape, it's Wednesday night, December 9th, at 5:30 at Zips, which is on the southeast corner of 64th Street and Greenway. So there's a Walgreens there right on the corner, Zips is directly to the east, again on the south side of Greenway, on the east side of 64th Street. Anybody is welcome, please come out, and we'd be happy to see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the council make any comments? Councilwoman Gates, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Also had the opportunity to attend the Electric Light Parade on Saturday night, and that's always a great time, and just incredible crowds out there and incredible support from APS, from Phoenix Parks and others. So just want to thank everyone and all of the volunteers who were part of that. Also, last night on Monday, December 7th, we had the annual Crystal Princess event, which is at John C. Lincoln Hospital in Sunny Slope. It's an incredible event where hundreds of kids come from around the area, have the chance to meet the Crystal Princess, and participate in different types of holiday activities. So I really want to thank Honor Health for continuing that tradition, which is just a wonderful event in Sunny Slope. And finally, I'm honored to have the opportunity this Saturday on December 12th to give the commencement speech at Arizona Christian University. It's their first fall commencement that they're doing, and I want to thank President Lynn Munsel for inviting me to participate in that event in District 3. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anybody want to give advice to Councilwoman Gates on the commencement speech?
I want to know if he's getting an honorary doctorate. Dr. Gates?
I can't comment on that.[335.16][335.16](Laughter).
Keep it short. All right, next, any other members of the council like to give comments? Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you. It's been a great holiday season in District 8 so far, and want to wish a happy Hanukkah to my fellow members of the Jewish community, and thank many of the individuals who've welcomed me for holiday events, including the folks at Marcos Denisa and Post 41 of the American Legion helped provide free turkeys and pies to start the holiday season off as well. Councilwoman Nowakowski and I got to join with CPLC this weekend for their annual Holiday Wellness Festival, and they had a great visit from Santa Claus to bring lots of joy to that area. We also, in District 8, got to celebrate the holiday event for Rossen House and Heritage Square, and remember a lot of Phoenix's history, and Rossen House is all dressed up for the holidays with both Christmas and Hanukkah decor, so encourage anyone who hasn't visited in a while to come by. We are also kicking off today, community discussions about land use around the airport, and I wanted to invite people to the first meeting tonight at Eastlake Park Community Center, tomorrow at Wesley Community Central in Central City South, and Thursday night at Broadway Heritage Neighborhood Resource Center at 24th Street and Broadway. And those meetings will start at 6:00 PM, and you're welcome to call my office at (602) 262-7493 if you have any questions about that. And lastly, I want to thank all of the members of the My Brothers Keeper Initiative Local Action Plan Committee, most of, many of whom are here today, really looking forward to that agenda item, and grateful for all of the community leaders who have stepped up to help us have a great planning process.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gallego. Councilwoman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone, mark your calendars, because the big event's coming up, this Friday, we have our holiday event at Margaret Hands Park, where we're going to have all kinds of things going out there. We're going to have pictures with Santa Claus, and we're going to have the same Santa Claus that CPLC has. I don't know who that person might be. Hi, Greg, how you doing?[461.41][461.41](Laughter). And we're going to have all kinds of activities for the kids. They're going to be creating their own ornaments for their trees, and all kinds of holiday gifts, and then we're going to have a movie, The Polar Express, so come on down and enjoy. Really want to thank Dignity Health and all those partners that made this possible, our parks, and all of our different departments that are out there providing information to the community. Last time, we had over 800 people attend our Halloween festival, so hopefully we have the same amount of people out here at Margaret Hands Park. Last weekend, we had the great opportunity to do the groundbreaking, I mean, the ribbon-cutting for the Desert Sky Transit Center, making sure that Maryville and the west side has their fair share when it comes to transit. Beautiful, beautiful bus transit center where it's a piece of art. If you walk in there, you're just amazed, and the people were just commenting on how beautiful it looked, and that it wasn't just a building, but it was a piece of art. So thank you for all those individuals making that possible and making sure that our west valley has their fair share when it comes to transit. Also, this weekend, right here down, right in front of City Hall, we're going to have the Food City Tamale Festival. So all those individuals that want to come out and try some tamales, or even buy some and take them home for the holidays, come on down, and it's going to be Saturday and Sunday from 12:00 noon until about 6:00 o'clock, and then they're going to have the Best Tamale in the City of Phoenix contest about 3:00 on Sunday. So if you want to come on out, I think our city manager was a judge last year, and we ate about, what, 20 tamales or so? So it's a lot of tamales, let me tell you. The other thing is that, right here downtown Phoenix, we have the Nutcracker. It's become an annual event for families. It's a tradition, so if you haven't seen it, you need to come on down and watch the Nutcracker. It starts on December 11th. Also, at Cityscape, another tradition that started five years ago, we have an ice skating rink, yeah, right here in Phoenix, Arizona, on Central Avenue between Washington and Jefferson. We have an ice skating rink right in the middle of Cityscape. If you haven't experienced it, you got to come on down, bring your kids. It's an awesome, awesome experience. We have a Christmas tree right in the middle of the arena, and it seems like you're in a whole different city. So if you have a chance, come on down and experience the ice skating rink. And finally, Mayor, lastly, I'd like to make a recommendation. We had the policy, the ethics policy come out of our subcommittee back in September, and the last meeting I asked to put it on the policy agenda, so I'd like to see if we can schedule that in the near future to make sure that we have an opportunity for all the colleagues to listen to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of the council? I would just ask, on the off-chance that any young children watch the policy session of the city council, that any future broadcasts edit out the fact that he revealed that Gregory Torres actually is Santa Claus.[648.79][648.79](Laughter). Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Oglesby. He's one of our great public school teachers. He teaches AP Government at Alhambra High School, and I was invited out to just speak to his class, something that we do pretty often. I've also have spoken to many classes throughout the district, Maryville and Trevor Brown. And, you know, it's a special thing to do, and I always just come away so inspired by the talent that we have right here, this organic leadership that we have right here in our city. They're doing some great things, so I do want to thank the Alhambra Lions out of District 5 for that opportunity. I would also like to congratulate one of the, one of the great president CEOs who happened to do business in District 5, Brian Mueller, GCU's president and CEO, has just named Phoenix Business Journal Business Person of the Year. If you've been in the area around 33rd Avenue and Camelback, you would see a transformation in the area. There are more than 8,000 students now that attend Grand Canyon University. That number will continue to grow, and overall, about approximately $400 million of investment in the area in just the last few years with big plans to continue in the area, great partnership with Alhambra High School, and several other organizations to help move this community forward. And so he's been great to work with, and I was just very proud to see that he was awarded that recognition. Finally, Thursday, this Thursday at 10:00, 19th Avenue and Dunlap will have another press conference, another milestone for the 19th Avenue, the Northwest Light Rail Extension. We are pretty close. We're going to be cutting the ribbon here in the next few months. This is the 3.2-mile stretch from Bethany Home Road to Dunlap. It's something that we've all been waiting for, for quite some time. It's not just three miles of light rail. Think of the 20-plus miles that this community is going to be connected to. Within this three-mile stretch, we will, we will connect more than six schools, several places of worship, grocery stores, senior housing facilities. It's just a snapshot of what we really have in a community and what it's going to do for this particular area. So we are actually testing, we are testing, someone will be testing the cars. We are that close, and it's just very exciting. So on Thursday, 10:00, we will have that press conference, and the next one, I believe, will be in the first quarter of 2016, when we cut the ribbon and it becomes operational.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I'll just add one thing, which is really a word of congratulations and thanks. Is there a more important institution in this community for us to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish as a community than AmeriCo Community College District? And Dr. Rufus Glasper announced that he'll be resigning soon as chancellor of the AmeriCo Community Colleges. I've had a chance, I think all of us had a chance, to work very closely with Dr. Glasper and his leadership team over the last number of years, and my humble opinion, he has done an incredible job with that institution. It is one of the most, number one, I think it's the best community college district in the country, certainly one of the most innovative, and in terms of us meeting our economic development goals, the job training that they do through the corporate college and some of their other incredible job training programs are really second to none, and we simply, we work hand-in-hand with them, and we couldn't accomplish our goals without it, and Dr. Glasper has led that, that community college district through some challenging times, tumultuous times, and has been a real steady hand, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Glasper, for being such a great leader. I know you've got many great chapters still left in your career, but the chapter that you've led as head of, as chancellor of community colleges has been an outstanding one. With that, let's move on to the remainder of today's agenda. Is there a consent agenda or an executive session? Call Vice Mayor, do we know?
In accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona revised statute section 38-431.02.A meet in executive session on Tuesday, December 15th, 2015, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, pass as unanimously? Is there a consent agenda today? No consent agenda, okay. Next on the item is any reports and budget updates by our city manager, Mrs. Zurgar.
Mayor, we'll have a budget presentation next week, so there's nothing that I would bring today.
All right, moving quickly through our agenda. The next item is our My Brothers Keeper Local Action Plan. That was referenced by Councilwoman Gallego. We did have a, an initial presentation a few months back on My Brothers Keeper, but the message really was from this body is that we got to get more organized in a more significant way, and that's exactly what our leadership team has been doing. I know they're going to say it, but I'll say it as well. My Brothers Keeper is not a City of Phoenix initiative. The President of the United States challenged communities to accept the My Brothers Keeper challenge, and so when myself and Councilwoman Gallego and Councilwoman Pastor agreed to accept the challenge, it wasn't on behalf of the institution of the City of Phoenix, it was on behalf of this entire community. So to the extent that the city can serve as an organizing unit to help bring the community together around the pillars that the President challenged us, that's exactly what we have done, and I want to make sure that point was clear, that this is a community-wide effort, not a City of Phoenix effort per se, although we've, I think, done a really good job of helping to drive this agenda. So, Mr. City Manager, I think Deputy City Manager Deanna Janovich is going to lead the discussion, and obviously, we have a, lots of outstanding community talent here who have served as leaders on our planning committee, and want to make sure they get due recognition, but I'll let Deanna, you to jump in, unless Councilwoman Gallego or Councilwoman Pastor or both have any short words of introduction before we begin. Councilwoman Gallego?
Could we just have the folks who were involved in the planning stand up, and we could recognize them for their hard work?[1065.58][1065.58](Applause).
Thank you for doing that. Any other comments before we begin the presentation? Obviously, we'll have a chance to make comments throughout, and many of those leaders who did actively participate submitted cards and want to make comments on the item as well. Ms. Deanna Janovich?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deanna Janovich, deputy city manager with the City of Phoenix. Joining me at the table today is Don Logan, our Equal Opportunity Director, as well as Martin Whitfield, our My Brothers Keeper Coordinator. As Councilwoman Gallego said, before I turn it over to Mr. Logan, I wanted to also reiterate the diverse representation of community stakeholders that really came together and were instrumental in the development of the plan for the City of Phoenix community. It was certainly an effort with all of our community stakeholders and members, and so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Logan.
Mr. Logan, before you begin, can I just say a few comments, so, because it's going to get crazy, and, not crazy, but, you know, it's going to get long and busy.
Crazy in a good way. Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes. I just wanted to thank the entire community that participated, because it did take a whole true collaboration in building this action plan, and the fact that the whole community was represented, from nonprofits to faith-based, to local schools, to universities, everybody was, was part of it. So I really want to thank that leadership and this collaboration. I do want to specify or show the pillar chairs and recognize them, because they're really the ones that are going to place this action plan, or actually do the work to implement it, and we will have pillars in, throughout this plan. So I would like, real quickly, to recognize Terry Clark of Reedon, Arizona, Erin Parrott of Mentor Kids, Cindy Tassera of Phoenix Union High School District, Lyndon Jensen of ASCAN, Luis Enriquez of the Chicanas Borlakalsa, and Alexis Thomas of Pilgrim's Rest Baptist Church, because that's really where our hard work is going to begin, in making sure it happens. So if those that are here, please stand. I do want you to be recognized, and I do see Cindy, and everybody else.[1211.58][1211.58](Applause).
Thank you. See you.[1214.58][1214.58](Applause).
And then I finally, before we really get started, I want to thank Raul Ayala for designing the MBK logo. That was a collaborative effort along with Gregory Torres, and we were able to get to the logo, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Logan?
Mayor Stanton, members of the city council, we are pleased to be here to talk about the City of Phoenix efforts in response to President Obama's MBK initiative, whose objective is to ensure that all youth, in particular, young men of color, have opportunities to overcome barriers to success in school and life. Mayor Stanton signed, signed on to accept the President's MBK challenge and asked that Councilwomen Laura Pastor and Kate Gallego lead this effort. The councilwomen convened a local action summit and held four, excuse me, four community meetings to conduct a policy review and form recommendations to launch a plan of action. The MBK community initiative used six pillars, provided in the President MBK challenge to develop a plan of action that ensures that all young men of color are on a path to success. The six pillars include enter-school ready-to-learn, read at grade level by third grade, graduate from high school, compete post-secondary education training, be employed, and be safe from violent crime. The approach for developing the plan was to engage community through the collaborative process. In the initial community summit, there were more than 90 participants that included representatives from business entities, academia, public and private sectors, clergy, and neighborhoods. In our, in your council package is a draft action plan prepared by the community. This plan includes pillar overviews, challenges associated with each of the pillars, strategies, and performance measures. It should also be noted that Councilwomen Pastor and Gallego, along with our community stakeholders, deemed it important that the plan include strategies and performance measures for accountabilities. Mr. Martin Whitfield will provide his sample highlights of the strategies and performance measures from each pillar.
Thank you, Mr. Logan, Mayor, and members of the council. Under the enter-school ready-to-learn pillar, the community stakeholders identified the need to make sure young people of color know the resources available to them through the creation of a community guide. Now, this community guide will have opportunities for mentoring, tutoring, and volunteering. Also, establishing an early learning engagement work group will provide a support system to fathers working with their children as they are entering school. These are just a couple of the examples of strategies that will lead to an increase in the number of children served in early, early learning programs by 10%. Equally important, as we focus on young men of color, we must ensure engagement efforts target those most in need. Also aligning many of the community programs with the continuum of effective literacy practices, which includes making sure that young people understand spoken words, text, and written communication. These practices will lead to the success of kids reading at third grade, level by third grade. These, along with other strategies, will increase student reading proficiency by 5%. As the community stakeholders came together to talk about the increasing of graduation rates for high school, it was clear there were already many programs benefiting young people of color, and opportunity fairs would be beneficial to connect youth and parents with these programs and resources. It is also important we reduce the negative effect on health and well-being impacting their ability to graduate, and we can do this through professional development opportunities with youth. Again, we are striving to increase graduation rates by 1% and student aid completion by 5% each year. In the complete post-secondary education and training pillar, this team thought it was important to increase awareness on college admissions, financial aid, and scholarships, and we will achieve this through the development of an outreach plan to connect the youth with the resources they need, leading to the increase of college completion rates by 5%. As Mr. Logan indicated earlier, the MBK initiative is about affording young youth, particularly young men of color, opportunities to be successful, and employment is certainly crucial to their success. This team had lengthy discussions about employment opportunities across the valley, and a couple of the strategies they identified were hosting a job fair at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. There are many opportunities out there, and we'd like to match those opportunities with the youth, and then partnering with local businesses to increase full-time and summertime employment opportunities. Also, by leveraging the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, these partnerships and funding will lead to more youth entering pre-apprenticeship programs. Our final pillar, be safe from violent crime, led to a discussion of the need to make sure we really engage with our youth, and particularly, young men of color, through focus groups and surveys, to understand their safety concerns and their needs in the community. The community stakeholders also wanted to ensure we strengthen the trust between young men and police through community engagement programs such as the Police Explorers and Police Activities League. The information we're talking about will eventually be measured through the development of a police tracking mechanism to really evaluate the number of youth participating in these programs.
So where do we go from here? Our next steps include hosting an implementation summit, where we will continue to collaborate, collaborate with our community stakeholders in advancing the plan. We've identified joint pillar chairs, which Councilmember Pastor introduced earlier, that include members from the community partnered with Phoenix staff. Periodic updates will be provided to the mayor and city councils as we move forward. On the slide before you, again, is the list of the pillar chairs that are representing the communities from pillars 1 through 6. In terms of community outreach, if approved today, we will launch My Brothers Keeper webpage, Facebook, and Twitter account. Mayor Stanton, members of the council, staff request your approval for My Brothers Keeper Action Plan. With that, we'll have any, answer any questions the council may have.
All right, thank you very much for the excellent presentation and for helping guide our outstanding members of the community to this, making sure we met the deadline from President Obama in terms of a good response from this community, knowing that, assuming it's a pass here today by this council, we've just begun. We're just getting, Martin's going to have a job for a while, we sure hope so, to keep make sure we're moving on the, on the right track. I do have some cards from community leaders who would like to speak. I first see, before, do we have any questions from members of this council? And they may come up later as well. Our first speaker then will be Chanel Poe. Chanel, do you have any comments on this item? Chanel's a board member of the Balls Elementary School District, and recently won ASBA Advocate of the Year. Congratulations.[1669.33][1669.33](Applause). Ms. Poe?
I'm not sure if this is on. Oh, can you guys hear me? Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I first want to say, I really am so elated to know, to see the City of Phoenix take action on this. I remember last year, when we were in DC at Congressional Black Caucus, and we attended the My Brothers Keeper Town Hall, that everyone was just absolutely blown away and was eager to work. So I just want to thank the leadership of Councilwoman Gallego, and also Councilwoman Pastor really stepping up to lead this initiative. This year, I also would want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman Gallego for basically creating a historic event centered around the Congressional Black Caucus. I mean, this was something monumental, to have such a large delegation representing our great city, and being able to be a face for individuals to be able to identify with. That was really huge. That's when I had the opportunity to meet Martin, and I was like, Martin, you're going to be in charge of this new initiative? I'm going to hold you accountable. And he was cool as a fan, it was no sweat off of his back, and I just really appreciate how, when we did get back to Phoenix, thank you to the city for providing us the space and the opportunity to really communicate and network with the community. There was a large group of stakeholders that were invited to the table, and it really goes to show that coordination and collaboration is what really drove this initiative. I really want to give a special thanks to one of our chairs. I can't forget your name that fast, can I? No, not Cindy, from the city. Tim Valencia, you are so amazing. How can I forget Tim? So, Tim, I want to really, I really want to thank Tim for his leadership, because after we did meet as a group together, he did provide us with a space for our pillar in particular, which is graduation from high school, to really flesh out the plan. We updated it about several times, but finally, we were able to get it right. So again, I just want to thank the leadership of the city. Hopefully, this can be a model. thank the leadership of the city. Hopefully, this can be a model to be the inclusive city that we desire, and really make sure that we're reaching out to individuals in the community that are already doing the work, to really make a larger impact in the community, to create something sustainable. Those are my comments. Thank you all so much again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Poe, for your comments and your leadership on this initiative now and moving forward. Next speaker will be Michael Kelly. Mr. Kelly?
Oops. Good afternoon.
Good to see you.
Mayor Stanton, I rise in support of this outstanding initiative, and thank you, Councilwomen Gallego and Pastor, and the full city council for your leadership. As was mentioned, for the past few months, dozens of community agencies have met to develop this comprehensive plan that fosters collaboration, seeks to reduce duplication, and has services that are sustainable. As a matter of fact, business leaders, nonprofit, philanthropies, public safety, local school districts, have already stepped up to invest significant resources in MBK. For example, the Arizona Community Foundation and its Arizona Venture Fund for Quality Education has already invested over $1 million to improve the lives and outcomes of young people, including boys and young men of color. The first $100,000 went to the City of Phoenix. Thank you, Vice Mayor Woods, for, I mean, City of Tempe, forgive me. Sorry, Mayor.
Are you moving to the city?
He's riding for the City of Phoenix, right?
Yeah.
But the City of Tempe, you know, and also the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We also supported Maricopa School District, you know, and Don Covey and the supervisors, and also the 100,000 Job Initiative, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we appreciate that. So, during these times of political posturing, of incendiary rhetoric that seeks to divide us, I applaud the City of Phoenix for taking the lead with My Brothers Keeper Initiative, a community effort that by every measure has done much to bring us together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael Kelly, for your kind words, your testimony, and your leadership on this issue, and we congratulate the City of Tempe for getting that very prestigious grant, and our application will be better next time from the City of Phoenix. All right, the third speaker I have on this item is Gregory Torres, aka Chris Kringle.
Merry Christmas, little boys and girls. Mayor, thank you for embracing this initiative along with councilmembers Pastor and Gallego. I was excited when I first heard about it, and a little skeptical, you know, to be honest, because I know the challenge came with wanting a first-class program with no budget for us on our side of the ledger. But I got excited after the first meeting that, first of all, thanking also Deanna Genovich, Mr. Logan, and Mr. Whitfield for their leadership of gathering a cross-section of leaders in our community, to four really interesting meetings that I think we had phenomenal dialogue. In fact, if we had more time during those meetings, we'd still have more ideas. But I think our challenge is, how do we have sustainability? How do we find a way to get this embraced? And so, I think, again, for me personally, I'm excited about this, and I'm not just looking at it for young men of color from 16 to 24, I'm looking for our community, because I think it's a way to start a bridge and embrace across multiple sections in our community. We have to have some wins, though, so we're working on an initiative that I think might give us some traction. I think wins are what people like to see, and I think, I'm just proud and honored to be amongst some great leaders in this community that are running some phenomenal programs. I made the comment also that I thought we could become the, kind of, the United Nations of this initiative because of all these great organizations, and you have Downtown Phoenix, Inc., headed by Mr. Kreider, and I like that model, and I really think we have that opportunity. Our challenge is to find the gold nuggets within each of these organizations that they can share, and that we can embrace, and we can have some wins in the next 180 days. So, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres, for your comments and your leadership. Also supporting the item in favor, not wishing to speak, is Severio Ontiveros from the Job Corps Center. Thanks for all Job Corps does for the young people of the city. Before I seek a motion, I'll just make a quick statement, Gregory, on what you said, because some people may be skeptical because there is not direct dollars from Washington DC affiliated with the My Brothers Keeper initiative. But what the President was really doing was challenging communities, number one, focus on this issue, make it a priority, make success for young people, particularly young men of color, a higher priority than we have to organize around that success model, and with that will come resources from either the city, the nonprofit community, the philanthropy community, the foundation community, corporations. When they see us organizing around an issue and making it a priority, there will be dollars that follow. So, I don't want to leave a false impression that because there's no dollars flowing from Washington directly on this issue, that doesn't mean there won't be dollars to support this plan and the plan that hopefully this council will support here today, moving forward. And the real message, in addition to any dollars, is this is a priority for this community, not just the city council, but this community. And so, when we lay those priorities, often through the foundation community, et cetera, dollars will follow. So, I think there will be some resources. Any additional comments by members of this council, and I don't know if Councilwoman Gallego or Pastor would like to make a motion, see if it's seconded, and then we can make comments there from Councilwoman Pastor.
I move to the staff's approval request, the city council approval of My Brothers Keeper action plan. I should've said it just off the cusp instead of reading. Second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Now, I'll open it to members of the council. Any comments by members of this council? Councilwoman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone who's been involved in this initiative, and in particular, congratulations and thanks to my colleagues, Councilwoman Gallego and Councilwoman Pastor, for their leadership on this. And I did want to comment that it is really remarkable that Martin Whitfield could have come out of my office and still be this successful. So, you beat the odds. Congratulations, Martin.
Well, there goes my comment.
Councilwoman Akoski.
Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank you and my colleagues for their leadership, and what a great example of a Team Phoenix approach, where you bring people together from different resources that they have, and the nonprofit, to the schools, to the private sector, and really coming up with the strategy of how to help our young men and women out there and to empower people. And I just really want to thank you, and hopefully this becomes an example throughout the country of what you are calling the United Nations, and it really is the United Nations of not just individuals, but of nonprofits and the community out there. So, thank you so much for bringing people together and making a positive movement within the City of Phoenix.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other comments by members of this council? Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of the folks who have been doing this work long before the President challenged us. I hope this will be well-deserved recognition for people who have really been in the ground, doing work on mentoring, childhood literacy, and so many key works to make, work to make sure that we get this right, and we have to get this right. If we look at who's in the Phoenix Union High School District, this is the population that is the future workforce of the City of Phoenix, and so, these are key investments, and it's smart business sense for us to be doing this at the City of Phoenix. And I think we will have great partners. Already, through the governor's office, we've gotten support for some of the literacy work we're doing, and they have said that under those AmeriCorps grants, we can do a little bit more with My Brothers Keeper. So, it's just partnerships across the city that, with this table of folks coming together, it will be even easier, I hope, to get more resources together and to bring different partnerships together. We found already at some of the meetings, there were great people doing work on college completion who didn't all work together, and just connecting folks energized the work that was already being done. So, I hope we'll continue to bring people together and be more successful as a group. So, thank you to everyone who's gotten us here today, although, as the mayor said, the work is just beginning.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other comments? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, yeah, thank you. I want to thank Martin, congratulations. It doesn't surprise me that you did work with Councilman Gates. I know that you worked with Councilman Johnson. I have a tremendous amount of respect for both, and then you're all right, you are a leader. I think if you spend a couple minutes with this man, he's definitely a doer. And I want to thank every member of our city staff, the chairs. I'm really, as a Phoenician, I'm proud of the response so far of this initiative. Mayor, thank you for making this a priority and taking on the challenge, and I especially want to thank my colleagues, Councilwomen Laura Pastor and Kate Gallego. I was meeting with this group last week for an update, and, you know, I think we all agree, we are just so fortunate to have such strong champions amongst our city staff and our partners. But, you know, we have two, you know, Mayor, you picked a couple of, you know, Kate and Laura, both convicted, both passionate, and both are hands-on, and a lot of this success is due to Kate and Laura's leadership on it as well. So, congratulations. I know there's a lot more work to be done, but, you know, it's definitely moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, over the years, I have seen similar efforts focusing on getting the kids reading and through school, hopefully into college. But it's the first time in probably two decades I've ever seen a collaboration of this caliber. So, I am a great believer in what you are doing, and I know with these two, they're gonna be on you every second, making sure that you are not only creating action plans, finding partners, but they're gonna do monthly tabs on how many and how much. It's absolutely true. We need every child in this valley to be successful. If we want to continue to grow and prosper, we have to have a pool of talent, not only for employment, but for social purposes, that can become the leaders of tomorrow. And I think this is exactly the program that can do it. So, I praise you for all the hard work that you've put in, and recognize this is the beginning, and know that you're going to be successful.
Thank you, Councilman. Additional comments? So, we have a motion and a second to support the My Brothers Keeper Action Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously by the city council. Thanks again for our team and all the other leaders. And if we can do it, if you'll indulge us, maybe a quick photo on the side with the folks who are involved from My Brothers Keeper with members of the council, capture this moment, and then we'll get on to our next agenda item.
this is an early agenda. Legislative session doesn't start until next month. I think we're getting a little bit earlier start than we normally do, but to try to give guidance to our legislative team as they deal with state legislative issues as well as federal issues. I think the, I'm gonna have Tom Remus, our intergovernmental director, present with his team, but the order of votes will be, we'll try to get a vote on the, our pillars, if you will, of what our legislative team should be working on, the principles, and then a vote on some particular items that we can give them direction on. Mr. Remus?
Mayor and council, I'm Tom Remus with the Office of Government Relations. Joining me today is John Wayne Gonzalez, who oversees our state program, and James Rolosky, who oversees our federal program. In the audience, we have Sasha Perez. And the one member of the team that we would have at our table today to talk about the importance of grants at the state and federal level is Katia Hidalgo. Katia is not with us today because she's enjoying her honeymoon right now, so we all wish her the best. Today before you, we're seeking approval on two items, the state agenda and the federal agenda. We received input from city departments, we've requested meetings with the city council offices and city council staff, we presented to the subcommittees, and today, we're before you to ask for direction. We've asked for input from all of you, but today, we're looking for action. On the state agenda, the city council report has items listed A through N. That way, if there's any questions or items that would need to be pulled off and voted on separately, it would be easy to reference. We're looking for permission to introduce bills, and we do have that language included as attachments to the city council report. But we're also asking for some general direction on some topics that we know that will come back to us this legislative session, so that we are out there, as session is starting, talking to folks and relaying the city position. But as always, as bills are dropped and as city positions are vetted through city departments, we will come back to the mayor and council with those bills to ask for direction. I'll start with our guiding principle, and as Mayor, as you stated, these are our pillars. We talk about making sure to oppose any unfunded mandates where the state is shifting any new responsibilities to the city without any accompanying funds. We talk about protecting the ability of the mayor and council to set policy at a local level. We also talk about opposing any reduction of state shared revenues, which, as you all know, makes up approximately 34 percent of our city's general fund. And lastly, an item that we added last year, but we'd like to continue this year, is to protect our water resources. This topic is so important to the City of Phoenix, and I know our Water Services Department has been before you on this subject, so we'd like to include that as well.
All right, so does anyone on this council have a motion in support of the proposed guiding principles for our state legislative agenda?
Can I pull things up?
Councilman Warren?
Or can I, can I ask questions before I pull things up?
You, Mayor, although this is only, the single item right now is-
This is just a guiding principle.
Guiding principles, not individual piece legislation. Do we have a motion on the guiding principles?
Mayor, I would move approval.
We have a move approval that the items on the screen be our guiding principles? Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments on that or questions relative to the guiding principles? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Remus, I'll go through the specifics of the state legislative agenda.
Mayor and council, I will turn this over to John Gonzalez. John will be walking you through those specific items that we have before you today for our state program.
Thank you. Mayor and council, in your packet, in earlier presentations, there was an issue that was brought before a subcommittee dealing with another aspect of groundwater, and that is the enhanced Oxford management concepts. These are issues that have been brought by the Water Department to the city before.
Oh, quick, where, on the items you presented to us, is this not on there?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, this is an item that was brought before a subcommittee per the request of the Water Department.
Excellent.
It was added as a PowerPoint slide. It's been vetted through a subcommittee. This issue has also been vetted in a separate Water Department presentation last year before the same group. And it was noted that, to tie that to the guiding principles that were just approved, especially in the area of water resources, the Water Department felt, and Government Relations felt, that we needed to clarify that we would be seeking continued authority to working with stakeholders on development of the concepts. And that, as a reminder, is concepts where development is provided incentives for making sure that water is being pumped into aquifers near developments and also create new methods of dealing with water that's pumped out of the same region but not near the development that's using the water. So that is a PowerPoint slide that was added to the presentation.
Okay. And you need to vote on this, or you're seeking a vote on this proposal?
Mayor and Council, the Government Relations team and the Water Department believe we should, just to reinforce what the council has voted on before.
Does anyone have any questions about the concept of continued work with stakeholders on the development of enhanced aquifer management concepts? Councilwoman Williams, do you have any comments on that?
I'd just say, to go through the subcommittee, and this is an important issue, and it is part to the city of Phoenix's future water resources. So I think it's something that we need to support, and I would make the motion to approve.
A motion to support this as part of our legislative agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Mayor and Council, and the rest of the items that we're going to cover are in your city council report. The first slide, the second slide is electronic benefit transfer card regulations. You may remember that last year, there was an attempt to try to work with the bill sponsor, Representative Brophy McGee, to clarify language that was passed two years, several years ago, to give law enforcement the ability to enforce state law to make sure that electronic benefit transfer cards cannot be used at sexually oriented businesses. We worked with stakeholders. Given that the session was very short, we ran out of time. So we've been working in the off-session with the, continued work with the stakeholders, including the representative. We have bill language that is coming out of the legislature in your packet. You do have some draft language. So we request the ability to continue working with Representative Kate Brophy McGee and everyone else to try to give law enforcement the tools to accomplish what was the goal of this initial bill.
Okay, and just to be clear, so you're, from this point forward, you're going to go through in order of the stuff that we've been provided?
Correct.
It's not a very long proposed legislative agenda, so why don't we just go ahead then and take a vote now on that item? Is there a motion on whether this council will support staff recommendation that we support legislation that would allow law enforcement agencies to enforce the restrictions on the use of debit cards in adult-oriented establishments? Do we have a motion on that?
They're moved.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Can I just ask?
Councilman Waring, please.
I'm sorry, what happened to it last year?
This, as a primer for the mayor and council, Mayor Councilman Waring, what happened was that the legislature passed this measure in 2003 per federal requirement. And what the initial legislation required, what these cards could not be used in certain liquor establishments, gaming facilities, as well as sexually oriented businesses. The way the bill was eventually written, we learned after the fact that there are portions of the sexually oriented business language that was not enforceable, because there are certain areas of business that the city does not license. And so therefore, we're trying to fix it so that any law enforcement agency, including Phoenix PD, can go into any sexually oriented business to make sure that the ATM machines at those facilities are not accepting these cards.
I think I asked, wasn't there a bill for this last year?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, we worked on a draft piece of legislation. You gave us the authority to work on it.
I know it was a short session and so-
We were working on it, and we did finally come to a solution. However, once the solution was arrived at by everyone, including Department of Liquor, Department of Economic Security, the representative, of course, we just ran out of time to get those fixes added to the bill. Since then, we've been working with those same folks, and we should, and you have a draft of that in your packet of what changes we're proposing to make.
But you think it would have passed last year if you'd had more time?
Mayor and Council, you are correct. We had agreements on the language. We just didn't have the time to get those in committee.
Any additional questions? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next issue is pawn shop fees.
Mayor and Council, while there is not a piece of legislation attached to this, you'll recall that last session, there was an attempt to eliminate the pawn shop fee. For example, in the city of Phoenix, there is a $3.50 per transaction fee. Those monies go to support law enforcement, especially in Phoenix, the police department's pawn shop operations. If these, you should know that the monies, in the most current fiscal year, were supposed to collect our $1.3 million from these fees, but that only covers, based on the auditor, City Auditor's Department, that only covers 77% of the cost to operate the pawn shop unit. So given that factor, we would like the authority to oppose any attempt to eliminate or reduce pawn shop fees.
Do we have a motion on that?
They're moved.
Do we have a second? Do you have any questions or comments from members of this council? All in favor of supporting staff recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. I think it, six to two, it passes this council. Councilman Waring and Councilman Gates in opposition. Next is alarm agent criminal background checks?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The city of Phoenix, for many, many years, used to have a program where criminal background checks were conducted on those alarm installers, those alarm agents. What happened was in 2012, the state took over that authority, and that authority was given to the Bureau of Technical Registration, and DPS currently conducts those background checks for them. Attempts have been made over the last several years to eliminate the criminal background check. Phoenix Police, which is in the audience today, we have representatives from the Alarm Agent Division of Phoenix PD, have great concerns, because their records have shown that when Phoenix used to have this program, they found a number of individuals with criminal backgrounds trying to get licensed in Arizona or in Phoenix in order to install alarms. So with that, staff would like to request the authority to oppose any efforts to weaken the criminal background checks for alarm agents.
I move approval.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Waring had a question?
I'm sorry, we have a whole division to do this, even though we're not doing this anymore?
Mayor and Council, there was a segment of the Phoenix Police Department that worked on this, when we used to have the authority. However, what's happened is now it's narrowed down to a very small detail that still oversees the alarm agents. A lot of it has to do with the alarms. But the state has taken over all of the administration of this. BTR has taken administration, working with DPS, doing a criminal background check. So we no longer perform those background checks.
I mean, if the state's doing the bulk of the work, what is the skeleton crew doing left?
You want someone from Phoenix PD to answer on it?
Mayor and Council, I do not have that answer, but we do have individuals or individual from the alarm facility, if you would like to hear, or we can always brief you after the fact.
Do we have somebody here that can answer the question for Councilman Waring about the duties of the police department employees or officers who engage in-
He said before there were people here-
The alarm agent criminal background checks? Great to see you. Please introduce yourself, please come forward, just, you can move beyond there, yeah, no problem. Sit at the chair and turn on the mic and introduce yourself and provide an answer to Councilman Waring.
Thank you. My name is Becky Buchanan. I'm the alarm coordinator in the alarm detail of the code enforcement unit. We process all the alarm calls that come into the city of Phoenix that are deemed false alarms by the police officers that respond to those alarm activations. Prior to that, we also did the licensing for the alarm businesses and the agents that would install the alarm systems in the residential homes and the commercial buildings.
Councilman?
But we don't do that anymore. The state does.
I think it's different, I think the state does all the background checks. We still do alarm enforcement for, for false alarms.
I know if there's false alarms, I mean-
Right, we don't do any of the licensing for the business or the agents.
Yeah, that's what I said. Okay, so is it just you, or, I mean, how big is the staff doing this?
Currently, there is a staff of nine civilians and two sworn detectives that go out and handle all the false alarms, the permitting, the letters that go out indicating that there's false alarms. The detectives go out and do inspections for alarm systems that are incurring 10 or more false alarms in a 365-day period.
How big was the staff before the state took over a decent chunk of the work?
There was, I believe, 13, 13 staff members.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a quick question. What kind of criminal backgrounds are they looking for? What is it, what kind of crimes that are committed in the past would then eliminate someone from engaging and be involved in the alarm business?
Well, Mayor and Council, these, again, are the criminal background checks that are run by FBI computers that DPS has access to. And I'll let Ms. Buchanan talk about some of the criminal activities that were found.
In years past, we've actually found an individual that had committed a homicide, went to prison, came out of prison, and because of the way the law was written, he had been in prison over five years, so when he came out, he was able to get a license. We recently had an individual that was a salesman. He is required to be licensed, took the identity of an individual for the betterment of himself. He was actually convicted, I believe it was eight counts, and is currently in prison. I believe it's an eight-year sentence.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much for your impromptu testimony here today. So we have a motion in favor of staff recommendation. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next is a proposal for 911 infrastructure.
Yes, Mayor and Council. In 2001, the legislature instituted a 911 fee. It began at 37 cents, and per statute, it ratcheted down to 28 cents in 2006, and now it's 20 cents since 2007. And what's happening is that the revenues are not meeting the demands of the system. We have infrastructure costs. We also have the potential for next-gen 911 technologies that are coming online. And to clarify for people at home, we're talking about the ability to text 911 or send pictures and videos to someone to 911 via your smartphone, which you can't do right now. This is also an issue, not just for the region, but it's an issue for the state, because we have a lack of redundancy of some of these emergency programs, the technologies, cell phone towers that can't cover the state with GPS mapping. So what's before you is the authority to, that we can work with members of the legislature, and we have been talking a lot to rural legislators, because this is not just a regional thing, this is a statewide issue. And begin a dialogue and maybe creating a study committee to look at what can be done to increase revenues, to provide for the technologies that are needed, sorely needed for our public safety personnel.
Thanks so much. Is there a motion on support of the creation of a 911 study committee?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion is second. Any additional, or any comments or questions by members of this body?
Can I ask a question?
Councilman Waring?
Very brief. So this is not raising a fee or anything, this is just studying the issue?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, you are correct. The authority we would have is to seek the ability for the legislature to create a study committee, to begin the dialogue in order to see where we can go from here. But it is not asking request, not, we're not getting, seeking permission to go seek any increase in any fees on this issue.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is local fire marshal authority to inspect schools.
Mayor and Council, recently, the city has been approached by a number of schools that are trying to complete their building constructions on time, they're building new construction on time. What's happened right now is that in Arizona, the state fire marshal has the authority, is the prime authority to sign off on any type of inspection for these schools. So in working with our fire marshal and talking to some folks, matter of fact, even just sharing some information with the governor's office, there is interest in potentially having local fire marshals be approached by school districts for these types of inspections. Again, the legislation, which is in your packet, that we're seeking is not to mandate, but to give schools an option to come either to the city or go to the state in order to get their inspections taken care of in time. So that is the recommendation staff is proposing.
Excellent. I see this would cover both traditional public schools and charter schools?
Mayor and Council, you are correct.
Any comments or questions or a motion by members of this body relative to seeking approval to amend state law to allow schools to have the city fire marshal do the inspections?
Mayor, I know that this happened in my district, and so I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we're on to water and environment, supporting the establishment of the Arizona Power Authority?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The Arizona Power Authority is set to sunset July 2016. Their main responsibility is to allocate the power that's generated at the Hoover Dam and get that out into different segments of the state. Right now, Phoenix is in a position to receive a 50-year allocation of this power. So staff and the Water Department, Government Relations, is seeking the ability to support the extension of the Arizona Power Authority. And it should be noted that a legislative committee met this summer and recommended a seven-year extension. So staff would be supporting those efforts to extend this authority.
Do you have a motion on this item?
Move approval.
Your second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Let's see, on the water issues, this is a water statute cleanup. We probably don't need an explanation from staff on that one. Do we have a motion on water statute cleanup?
Mayor?
Councilman Gates?
May I actually offer a motion on several items, and then if folks have objections, if we can pull those out?
I think that'd be great. That's no problem.
Okay, great. I move approval of item F. Let's see, did we just do, yeah?
We just did F, so we're on G now.
G, J, K, L, and M.
J, K, L, and M.
That's kind of an omnibus?
Yeah.
Do the other ones, hold out the other ones?
Can I, can I ask a question about, maybe he could include N if my interpretation is correct, or N, N, excuse me. Those are just to monitor, not to necessarily take positions. Is that correct?
Mayor and council members, on letter N, these issues were brought to us by council members to put on, to make sure that staff was aware of it and would bring back any information on these particular areas. So if any of these issues come up, and there's, we would have to come back to council-
Get direction.
And get direction if we want to be able to engage.
If you want to add N, Bill, that's fine with me.
Yeah, so it would accept that friendly amendment.
Second.
Okay. So we have an omnibus on G, J, K, L, N, M, L, M, N.
Yes.
N, and on the items involved in N, when we get more specifics, we'll come back before this council.
So basically, you're holding out H and I. Is that another way to say it?
We are holding out H and I.
I and M.
Holding out that's part of it.
Okay.
Just holding out H and I is my understanding.
Okay. That's the motion. Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Bob Booker here from the Arizona Commission for the Arts. Thank you for coming down, and good luck. We hope you do get support to get full funding for the Arizona Commission of Arts, and it looks like you're heading in a positive direction, at least with support for the city of Phoenix. Your work is very important, so thanks for taking the time to come down.
I think we just need a vote on H.
Okay. So H, we assume that the bill to eliminate the residential rental tax is coming back. This was before this council last year. We did support efforts to not eliminate the residential rental tax because of, for variety of reasons, because of the significant impact on our budget. I assume the analysis from staff is the same as last year?
Actually, Mayor and Council, previously, last year, we, Budget and Research estimated a $30 million hit based on new numbers. Budget and Research now calculates, if this bill were to pass, would be a $32 million hit to the city's general fund. And to note, since 71% of the general fund is public safety, that would be roughly an 18 or 18.5, 18.5 million dollar hit to public safety areas, potentially.
Okay, so staff is recommending opposing a reduction or elimination of the local residential rental tax. Do we have a motion on that item?
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have comments, Councilman Waring? Any other comments on this item? All in favor of staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It passes six to two. And finally, on- And finally, on the state legislative agenda is population methodology estimates?
Yes.
And as quickly as possible. I know there's a long backstory on this one. So as reasonably quickly as possible.
Well, Mayor and Council, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns has been convening meetings in the off-session to try to develop a new method to distribute revenue sharing. For those that are not aware, revenue sharing is distributed based on population, and those numbers are used either through the biannual, the decennial census or the mid-decade census. So under this proposal, the League of Cities and Towns, and there's language in your packet, working with all the stakeholders, that develop a methodology where we would rely on the estimates from the annual estimates from the U.S. Census Bureau in order to determine how revenue sharing is distributed. And that is basically what the bill would do in a nutshell.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Question? Councilman Waring, please. So this does not raise state share revenues taxes in any way. It's simply the distribution amongst cities of the already existing revenue.
Mayor and Council, that is correct. Whatever monies are already allocated for revenue sharing, the methodology of how that's distributed is what's impacted. It doesn't raise or lower the overall revenue sharing pot for the state.
The pot stays the same.
It's how it's divided, sir.
But this bill is, you know, very, very important to the city of Phoenix, because if it's not successful, we will be hurt significantly in terms of the amount of state share revenue that we will, we will not be able to get our fair share. And otherwise, we'd have to spend a huge amount of money to do a traditional census-like activity mid-decade in order to receive our fair share. So I certainly support this and think this is the right approach to ensure that city of Phoenix taxpayers get their fair share to the best of our ability.
So I'd move approval.
We have a motion in favor.
Second.
We have a second. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Now move on to the federal agenda. Councilman Gates, in your wisdom, do you want to try to do an omnibus on federal?
Sure. Move approval of section one.
Transportation? Oh, we want to make sure we're working off the same hymn book here, if you will.
Section, yeah. Section two, public safety.
Okay.
Hopefully, section three. Water and sustainability.
Let's start with those two.
Okay. So we have a motion to support the proposed federal agenda as it relates to transportation and public safety. We have a motion. We have a second.
Move approval.
I actually have a question on public safety.
Please. Councilwoman.
We have, one of the things we're looking forward to, I hope that I have the right public safety section, is grants for cellphones for police officers. I just wanted to get a sense. It says we'd be applying to get 1,400 cellphones. If we are successful, what would be the cost of the bills for those cellphones? And is that something that would be a new expense?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guigano, let me check and see if there is someone from our police department who could join us up here.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'm Assistant Chief Dave Harvey. This particular section is just looking for grant-funded opportunities for cellphones for police officers. Approximately 1,600 first responders, just for the phones themselves, would be in the neighborhood of a million dollars. That doesn't include all of the infrastructure technology for backup and storage, which would also be part of the estimate when we were, when we would be seeking grant funds.
So this is not the body camera item, but cellphones? We would have to store all of the data?
Yes.
Of every call every officer makes?
Picture, pictures, any emails, messages, things like that, digital evidence would also have to be incorporated in the purchase of the cellphones.
And if we were successful in getting these 1,400 cellphones mentioned here, would we then have an additional expense of a monthly bill for each one of those?
Yes, we would.
And would, do we anticipate that the grant would, it would be a significant expense that we would be adding?
That would have to be evaluated at the, for each grant opportunity. There are some that have operating and maintenance expenses that are covered in grant funding. It just depends on what opportunities are available at the time.
Okay. I guess I would love this to go to public safety for analysis before we do a specific grant, just if we're going to be adding $2 million in cellphone bills, I would like to understand that ahead of time so that we can make sure we weigh that.
Councilwoman, we can definitely come back to public safety with a recommendation if we do in fact identify any opportunities for grants to move forward.
And to make sure we've studied also, I'm sure that there are barriers where, but there might be possibilities for officers to use their own cellphones if we can overcome security concerns, which will be difficult, but that might be significant savings over buying thousands of cellphones. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. So we have a motion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mayor? Oh, sorry. Councilor Nakowski?
Mayor, under safety, item number A, it says to continue. I like to say, I like to see it increased. I think the UAC funds, the Urban Area Security Initiative, that we should look for increasing those funds. We're the only city within the, within the state of Arizona that actually receives those funds. We actually helped neighboring cities all the way to Tucson to secure the areas. So I think that we need to really look at increasing that and going out there and getting our fair share when it, I know that we're not a boarding, we're not on the border, but I mean, we're the only city that really reaches out to those other cities that are our border cities.
A friendly amendment would be to ask that we increase our attempt to get UAC funds. Is that, does the maker of the motion accept that?
Absolutely.
Yes. Do we have a second? The seconder accept it?
Yes.
Councilman Gates, you have a question?
Yeah, as well, I would add, I've got more to add to the motion now. I would also add three to the motion, and four, holding out E.
Okay, so three concerns water.
I may not do four.
Okay, we're going to hold out all of four then.
All of four held out.
Three is then water, environment, parks, and sustainability proposal will be included in the omnibus motion?
Agreed.
That's agreed by the maker of the motion and by the seconder? Okay. So let's, if any questions, any remaining questions on one, section one, two, and three in the federal agenda?
I have questions.
Councilman Waring, you have questions on the omnibus?
So on the first one, transportation, G, which is in kind of the below middle of the second page, supporting long-term surface transportation reauthorization legislation reflects the city's priorities. So is this, would this be considered light rail? Is this bike lanes? Is this all of it?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Waring, there are specific priorities outlined in the packet, but you're correct. It includes all modes of surface transportation.
So my problem is, some of those are my priorities and some of them aren't. So I guess I would like to hold out G.
All right, let's go, we're going to hold out G from the, from the motion then? Councilman Waring?
I have another question. Thank you. So this is I. Exploring ways to leverage local tax dollars to obtain more federal funding for local surface transportation projects. What are local surface transportation projects? Are they streets? Are they bike lanes? Are they light rail? What are they?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Waring, again, I think you could run the gamut of the modes of transportation.
We'll hold out I under those circumstances. Next, L, restoring the alternative fuel tax credit retroactive to January 1st, 2015. Can you explain what that means to a layman?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Waring, essentially, the city is able to take advantage of a current tax break known as the alternative fuel tax credit. And there is a bottom line impact to the city of Phoenix transportation, or public transit department, rather, of approximately $2.3 million. And essentially, the taxes-
And that's mostly buses?
Correct. It's the public transit department specifically.
Thank you.
You're going to hold that out? You're going to go with it?
No, that's okay. You can leave that one in. On, we included water, right? Number three?
Yes.
Thank you. G, supporting legislation on the 10-year cycle, is that to give us more leeway because of our dust situation?
This is on 3G, the ozone air quality standard.
I'll just put it more loosely. Why are we doing G?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Waring, essentially, right now, what's required is a 10-year period and what we're looking for with respect to this item, and I don't want to get into too much technical detail, I prefer to defer to environmental program staff that requested this item, but essentially, what we're looking for is a 10-year review cycle rather than the current five-year. Essentially, what that would allow us to do is to come into compliance before a new set of requirements is added into law. So if it happens every five years, the concern is that we don't have time to sort of catch up and abide by those before a new set of standards is in place.
Fair enough. We can leave that one in.
All right. Any other questions?
I actually would like to hold that one out.
Hold that one out? All right, just a moment here.
See how difficult she is?
Yep. Such a troublemaker.
It's always me. I'm so glad to have a problem.
All right. Any other holdouts on the omnibus? So that means we're going to hold out for the purpose of this omnibus. One, G, is that right?
Aye.
One G, one I, and three G. So the motion is sections one, two, and three, holding out those items. We have a motion.
I have a question on, also on three.
Okay, please, now would be time to do so.
On the land and water conservation fund, it specifically mentions two preserves, but I would love to be open to looking at additional projects such as Cedar Chavis Parks and others. And I did speak with the park director, and that seemed like everyone was comfortable with that. So a friendly amendment, I guess, that we would-
Friendly amendment that we would be open-minded to look at other projects under the land and water conservation fund in addition to the Sonoran Preserve and the development of Margaret T. Hans Park. Does the maker of the motion accept that we would look at other possible uses of the land and water conservation fund?
Yes.
Does the second accept that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gai, go, any others? Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we'll go back and do then one G, surface transportation reauthorization. Do we have a motion on one G?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, all right. One no on that one. All right, so it passes on a seven to one vote. One I, leveraging local funds as it relates to surface transportation, which could include all modes, including light rail. Do we have a motion on one I?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It passes seven to one. Next item was three something.
G.
G.
Three G, which is the ozone air quality standard, whether it would be reviewed every five years, which is current federal law, and we're at, Senator McCain and Flake are asking for it to be a 10-year ozone air quality standard review. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I think, given limited resources, this is not one that would be at the top of my list. It is unlikely to advance, and so I think we can put resources elsewhere.
I still think-
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Williams, please.
I still think that this is important, especially in the valley. It has always been a problem for us to comply as they change the standards based on east coast conditions rather than a desert, so I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any additional comments or questions? Do you have any questions, Councilman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It passes on a seven to one vote. Now we're on to section four, which is community development. Does anyone want to pull out individual items in the community development section? One is fair share, choice neighborhood program, home investment partnership program, public housing capital fund program, section eight housing choice vouchers. Basically, I think we're asking that we, that Congress continue to fully support these established neighborhood and housing programs. Councilman Gates, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm formulating a motion. Give me a second.
All right, what do you want to pull out?
Just a second. I would like to pull out E.
Okay.
J.
E.
J. K.
J, okay. J and K, okay.
R.
R.
And T.
R and T. All right, you want to make the motion on the rest then?
So moved.
So moved, holding out those items that were just mentioned. Is there a second? Any comments or questions by members of this council on the federal agenda as it relates to community development? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is item four E, support for an increase in section eight administrative fees to a minimum 100% of the formula, administrative relate to allow public housing authorities more autonomy to use funding in whole, to ensure more efficient, effective administration, and support for enactment of other section eight reforms that have been adopted in the House but not enacted into law. Do we have a motion on supporting those recommendations as it relates to section eight housing? Vice Mayor made a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any questions by members of this council?
Can we hang on for a second?
Councilman Waring?
The whole thing, pulling these out.
Correct.
I wanted to vote no on that. I'm sorry.
Before that?
Yes. I want to vote, I pulled out one that I want to vote for.
You wanted to vote no on the rest?
I wanted to vote no on the rest.
On the last motion.
So, and so you voted the wrong way?
No.
Okay.
No, I think I said silent. That's a mistake. I want to vote.
Councilman Waring is going to vote yes on something?
So I'm looking to our city attorney. Jim Waring stayed silent when he meant to vote no. Do we have to reconsider to allow him to vote no? Or can he now, for the safe, he meant to vote no and have that recorded for the record?
The latter will we, sufficient, Mayor, in this context?
Okay. So let the record reflect, Councilman Waring, shockingly, voted no. All right, next, so we're now back to section eight, housing choice voucher. We did have a motion. We did have a second. I'm asking if there are any particular questions as it relates to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?[1649.82] Any opposed? This is E.
No.
No.
Okay, so now it passes seven to two, or six to two, excuse me. Okay, next, what was the next one we pulled out? J, the community service block grant program was pulled out.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I pulled it out to vote yes.
Because you don't like women, or what's the deal?
I--
I pulled it out to vote yes.
Just when you thought you'd figured him out.
All in favor of the community services block grant program say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Oh, my gosh.
Family advocacy center, I'm assuming it was pulled out for the same reason. We have motion on family advocacy center to maintain the VAWA and the VOCA funding to increase futures without violence funding for our family advocacy center. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is item R. This is the Marketplace Fairness Act. Do we have a motion to support, oh, we're asking to monitor and participate in discussion? We're not, is that support for a market? What are we doing on this one? James?
Mayor--
What are you recommending?
Mayor and council, essentially, what we'd like to do on this item is to monitor. There's a lot of active discussions that have been going on for a number of years for a variety of reasons.